At 6:30, we're going to get started. If you can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, got roll call of board members. Kester?
Here.
Aaron's?
Here.
Slopsoma?
Here.
Hoaksima, present.
Milnick?
Here.
All right, next we've got any, do we have any adjustments to the meeting agenda from anybody? I think we can state that, that's not a problem. Okay, any adjustments, anybody has? That I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll second that.
So, motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Hoaksima, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Declaration of conflict of interest, does any board member have a conflict of interest with the content of today's meeting agenda?
No.
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 No. All right, no conflict of interest noted. Next, we have public comment, any person is permitted to address the meeting of the township board, public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules. Comments shall be directed to the board with questions to the chair. Any person wishing to address the board for general public comment shall speak from the lectern and state his or her name and address. Persons may address the board on matters that are relevant to township government issues. The chair shall control the amount of time, each person shall be allowed to speak, and that shall not exceed five minutes excluding the time needed to answer board member questions. In order to avoid unscheduled debates, the board generally will not comment or respond to presenters, silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement. So who would like to step forward and make a public comment? I would like to clarify, this is not the time to make comments on the Skigamog Point SAD, this is general public comment right now. So would somebody like to make a public comment?
Mike Jacobson, Skigamog Point Road. To my knowledge, the public hearing we just had up at school is the biggest group of people that's ever been in front of this particular board. I know that there were a lot of people that I talked to that had the same sentiments as most of the people at that meeting, but they would not come to the public hearing because they're afraid of putting a target on their back, or if they speak up, they will be next in line to get the target on their back. And I also know that there's a lot of people at that meeting that didn't speak because they felt like the crowd had said everything they were going to say anyway. So I hope that the board takes into consideration that they just saw the largest group of people that's ever been in front of them, to my knowledge, and the group was as a whole mostly against it, there were very few people that spoke for what we were there to talk about. So I would hope that the board would take a moment and realize that there's a large constituency of people in their community that isn't being represented, and that is completely against this whole thing. And I can tell you that the people that didn't show and the people who didn't talk will vote, and their voice will be heard when they vote. Thank you for your time and energy.
Thank you, who else would like to make a public comment tonight?
I'd just like to ask, who's trying to get in on Zoom and he can't get in, not working?
Anybody else want to make a public comment?
Tom Slopsoma, 9693 Miami Beach Road. These are my personal comments, not reflecting those of any board members. My topic is Section 7 on the schedule of civil fines and costs in the proposed Civil Infractions Ordinance. At last week's public comment meeting, I attended, the majority of citizen concerns were about property owners' rights to store junk in their front yards visible from the road. I don't know why a past board approved this junk ordinance about 20 years ago, but it provides for maximum fines of $500 plus court costs. Your proposed infractions ordinance reduces these fines to begin at $75, working up to 500. I suggest the board reduce these fines further yet, for those folks who want the right to store junk where it's visible from the road, maybe start at $40 and work up to $120. Issue two, I don't think the board has been exposed to the huge short-term rental STR problems the township residents are experiencing. Problems include excessive noise, empty bottles, cans, trash pollution, light pollution, trespassing, increased traffic, parking problems, public intoxication, and more. When rented to bachelor or bachelorette events, the property turns into a party barn for a week. This township had a revolt over party barns a few years ago. Short-term rentals have never been allowed in our township. State of Michigan courts have ruled STRs are a commercial use not approved for residential districts. Many folks purchased property in this township knowing that STRs were not allowed. I request the township board protect my property rights and property values of us residential property owners to live and use our property in the quiet, peaceful manner we intended, not being subject to all the problems of having an unpoliced hotel move in next door. The proposed Civil Infractions Ordinance fine schedule is totally inadequate to deal with STRs. The fines listed are miniscule to STR owners who will just pay the tiny fines and continue their violations. I request the board to begin the fines for the STRs in the thousands of dollars per day, escalating quickly into the tens of thousands, because they're not allowed. Or, maybe you could consider what some Clearwater Township folks have proposed, force short-term renter properties to give one-third of the gross rental receipts to the neighbor on the right, one-third of the gross rental receipts to the neighbor on the left, in order to partially compensate them for some of the problems and aggravations that the STRs are causing in residential neighborhoods. Please protect our residential property rights. Thank you.
Pardon? Is there somebody else that would like to make a public comment at this time? All right, then we're going to move forward, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Skigamog Point Road improvement. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:39 PM. I need a second on that. So, motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Aaron's, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? None opposed. There is a sign-in sheet, if you're here for the Skigamog Point SAD, we would ask that, and Kay is putting it here at the podium, if you could make sure you sign in, that's a requirement we have to fulfill. The dates of the public hearing notice that was published in the paper, it was in the Traverse City Record Eagle on September 29th, 2025, and it was in the Elk Rapids News on September 25, 2025, and then again on October 2, 2025. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to review and approve the Skigamog Point Improvement Assessment Roll. Next is reporting on any written comments received for or against the assessment roll. We received one communication from citizen Mark Taylor indicating an objection to the fact that he has three parcels on the assessment roll, and he feels it's only appropriate for him to pay on two of the three parcels. That was it for written comments, so at this time, we invite the public to step forward and make any further comments they have on the Skigamog Point Assessment Roll. Would anybody like to step forward and make a public comment?
Mike Jacobson, Skigamog Point Road. As you know, I'm opposed to having the road paved. In my personal opinion, it should go back to gravel. It's cut down on our speeding problem, and I only live a half mile off the highway, and I know all of them don't, but a lot of the people that live down at the end go by my place way over the speed limit, even though the road is bad. So when the road gets fixed again, it will be even worse. But beyond that, I hope, once the township has to fork out this money, along with us citizens, that the township will help insist that the county road commission take care of the road and the ditches. They have neglected the ditch in front of my house for decades, so long that the ditch is filled in and my culverts no longer work, and my driveway washes out every time it rains. That's not my fault, that's the county's fault. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment regarding the Skigamog Point SAD? Joe, do you have somebody on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
We have Zoom user in the participants page, I'm asking them to unmute now. Zoom user, if you want to make public comment, you can unmute. We'll give them another second or two here. User, Zoom user, there they are, they are unmuted, go ahead, Zoom user.
Hi, my name is Karen Boyd, 6303 Bags Road. The only reason I was able to get on this Zoom meeting was because I got the information from Heidi, the information in the packet is not correct. So I don't know how many other people are trying to get on this meeting, and they're not able to, but the information in the packet is not the same as what I got from Heidi just now.
Okay, is there a comment you want to make, Karen, regarding the Skigamog Point SAD?
No, I'm just telling you that there's probably people that are trying to get on this that can't get on because they don't have the proper information. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are you guys in agreement on that? So Tim just suggested that as people get online, then we can allow them to comment at the end of the meeting. Okay.
Excuse me, Linda, was that Karen Boyd or?
Yes, Boyd, B-O-Y-D.
So my suggestion, if we're, please use your mic.
Yeah.
Got it. So my suggestion is, if we're going to do that, which I think we should, is that we not go through the other processes on the Special Assessment District. We just closed this part of the public hearing, we move on to other business, and then we have public hearing at the end, and then this be moved, the rest of the issues regarding the SAD be moved after that public hearing, because it wouldn't be fair to really vote as a board on something when we still have it.
Right. Okay, do we need to post something on our website to correct this? Or do we need to take?
I think it's too late to post on the website, but I think Heidi's.
Yeah, I believe we've been using the same static link, so I'm not sure.
Has been.
What happened? Okay. All right, so it looks like we have no further comments at this time, so at this point, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, and it looks like it's 6:45 PM.
I'll second.
So, motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Aaron's, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? None opposed. So at this time, we are not going to entertain any further board discussion on this, and we will pick this up again at the end of the meeting after the new business. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, we did receive some correspondence just today from Mark Krenoch related to the Civil Infraction Ordinance. That's the only correspondence we had, we've got some meeting minutes to approve and some bills for approval. So does anybody want to remove any of these items from the correspondence, from the consent calendar for discussion?
I believe there are minute corrections, aren't there?
There are.
Okay, so we have.
So we should remove that.
Okay, so we're going to pull the minutes out for discussion?
Right.
I believe we need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, that we remove the minutes.
Yeah, I don't think it's a motion, I think it just, the minutes are removed.
We're just pulling it out, okay.
Approve the consent as amended.
All right, is everybody okay approving the remainder of it, the bills for approval?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
As amended.
As amended, without the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
So that's seconded by Tim Aaron's. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? Jill, I didn't hear your answer, your aye. Okay, so that was approved by everyone, none opposed. All right, so let's talk about the meeting minutes now.
And I'll start adding on the agenda, just as a placeholder, another, like, going to be G, then it'd be H would be items to remove from consent, have like a one and two, so that it would be clear that when we remove things, where they would go in the order.
All right.
Be in blank until that happens.
Okay, so, we've got some red lines or changes to the meeting minutes? Who wants to get started on that?
Were those ones Wendy that I submitted to you, that she sent, so I don't have any comments on it, other than I had made some corrections or edits that I thought were appropriate for Wendy to accept or reject, and she sent them to all of you. Okay.
I looked at them, I was okay with the changes.
I was too, I wanted to be sure that that got done.
Any other comments, Jill? Wendy?
Wendy, did you send those?
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see those yet.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the September 25, 2025 regular meeting minutes as amended.
All right, and I will second that motion, so motion made by Aaron, seconded by Slopsoma to approve the amended meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, the motion passes. Next, we have item H, unfinished business, any park and recreation items, does anybody have any late items that came in that need to be discussed? Go ahead, Tim.
Just, the park is closed, the Halloween party weekend, last weekend was sellout, very successful, and the staff, it was the first time the actual park put the event on as a staff, before it was done by volunteers, the campers. And so they learned a lot this year, and they would like to continue doing events at the park. And the Monday, the electric upgrade project, underground electric upgrade project began, and I haven't heard any, other than consumers had to go back out and re-stake, because I think maybe somebody pulled the stakes out to put in their fire pits, but other than that, all is well.
Okay.
And we are, just for the public's information, we are going to keep the porta-potties and the docks in as late into October as possible, because we know that a lot of the local people still like to use the docks.
Okay. Any other comments on parks and rec? Okay, moving on to new business, the first item that we have is consideration of the Planning Commission recommendation regarding a citizen filed zoning amendment 2025-03. Okay, so Randy, do you have some, any introductory comments?
Just a few, I guess I would point your attention to the four-page memo that's in the packet from Keith Young, chairman of the Planning Commission, that describes the history of this proposed amendment, which began in April with an amendment filed by Rachel Steelman, representing residents for responsible and short-term rentals, that material was included in the packets for the township board and the planning commission in May, and then it was not discussed at the planning commission meeting, because it was, there was a heavy agenda that night. It was discussed on June 4th at the planning commission meeting, and then also they referred it to a committee, which was the outcome of the joint planning commission township.
Do you have something you need to tell me?
Yeah, staff here changed the meeting ID, so the meeting ID that's on the agenda, we have to start that meeting again, so are you able to take a recess to do?
Yeah, how much time do you need, Joe?
About five minutes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to take a five-minute break, so Joe can restart the Zoom, so that the people with the information that was online can join us, okay? So, I would say that we would reconvene at about 6:58, I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
So, motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Hoaksima, to take a five-minute break to restart Zoom, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to get restarted again, and I'm just going to announce, anybody that wants to join this, they're to be using meeting ID 884-9937-9134, this is our standard township board meeting Zoom link. This is our standard Township Board meeting Zoom link. It's always the same.
So you're gonna announce what happened with the other one?
Matt is helping the other people move over to this meeting. All right, so now we are ready for new business. We're gonna resume. Randy, you had started taking us through the comments from the Planning Commission and their recommendation regarding the text amendment that was submitted, case 2025-3.
Yes, I'm not sure exactly where I left off here, but essentially the Planning Commission began discussing this on June 4th and then, which was after the joint Planning Commission Town Board meeting, which we, the discussion of dealing with short-term rentals took place, as well as the idea of creating a Resident Outreach Subcommittee Work Group in order to address short-term rentals. The Planning Commission proceeded with having its public hearing on August 26th and actually began discussion of the proposed amendment based on those comments. On September 3rd, they acted and voted unanimously to recommend denial of the proposed amendment. There are 11 findings and conclusions that are outlined in the report. I would, can go through them if you like, but I think it's pretty straightforward. As far as the conclusions, it was, they've stated there's a compelling argument to reject the proposed zoning amendment formally, let the Resident Outreach Work Group do its job as planned, provide facts about public attitudes toward needed safeguards, protection, and regulatory options, and then let the Planning Commission draft a new ordinance. So it was also identified that it should be clear that rejecting the proposed amendment is not a vote to continue prohibiting STRs indefinitely. The master plan and the survey results clearly identify a conflict between evidence of public opinion and the current prohibition of STRs and a need to address this properly. So there is a recommendation formally coming from the Planning Commission, voted again unanimously on September 3rd to reject the proposed amendment.
Well, I guess at this point, I would just ask, does anybody, doesn't a board member have any questions for Randy since he's been involved in this every step of the way? I, I read the report, which was extremely detailed. Anybody?
So I would describe the options here. There is a draft motion in the packet and it's also possible for, if the Town Board chose to, to deliberate on this and even hold a public hearing if it chose to, its own public hearing. But that's optional and it's not required in our zoning ordinance.
So I would just say, I think the Planning Commission already did an enormous public hearing on this.
Most 90 people.
Yes.
And, and all the written comments that came in, the emails that spoke to the specific amendment as well as STRs in general.
Any further discussion?
Well, I think it's important to note, while we may agree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, it's important to note that we do have a Resident Outreach Work Group that is currently actively working on getting information to present to the Planning Commission and it's our expectation as a board that sometime in the very near future, that they will present us with a recommendation on an actual short-term rental ordinance as most other townships in Grand Travis County have. That's my understanding.
So just to be clear, the recommendation comes from the Planning Commission, not the Resident Outreach Group?
I said they were gonna provide information to the Planning Commission, yes. I just think, I just think that should be out there with us too.
Well, and I also noted in their conclusions, item three, that the proposed zoning amendment that we're referring to should be referred to the Resident Outreach Subcommittee Work Group for information and review. So they're providing all of the documentation to that subgroup.
That was actually done in June when it first was considered by the Planning Commission to refer to that group, which was just being formed at the time.
Well, and certainly they have all the information available to them from the public hearing as well, so, yes. Any other further questions or discussion?
Not for me.
All right, then I will make a motion to deny the proposed zoning amendment 2025-3 in accordance with the recommendation made by the Whitewater Township Planning Commission and the findings provided in correspondence dated September 30th, 2025. The Township Board concurs with and accepts the findings and the conclusions provided by the Planning Commission that were unanimously approved at their meeting on September 3, 2025.
I'll second that.
So, motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Milneck. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
The wording on the motion is just a little concerning. It says the board concurs with and accepts the findings and conclusions. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I would be in agree, in agreement because we're just waiting for the ROS.
Okay, so you're saying you support the motion?
Yeah, I just, I really like those, reading up the motion because that's saying that we're kind of agreeing with all the findings and that may not be so accurate, but I, I do agree that we should wait for the ROS.
All right, so you have to vote for or against the motion?
Both and aye.
Aye. Okay, all, all were in favor. Motion passes. Okay, moving on, the next one is a second report from the Planning Commission. And it's a recommendation regarding zoning amendment 2025-04. And I believe this is the one pulling all references to fees to reference our fee schedule.
That's correct. I would characterize this as more or less a housekeeping amendment here. When the ordinance was put into its new and improved form, most of the time there was a reference to the fee schedule that the Planning Commission, or that the Town Board has adopted for everything from zoning permits to special use permits to site plan reviews. All of that actions have a fee attached to them and the amount of that fee is associated with the amendment, or with the resolution that the Town Board passed. You recall, we did that, I think in February, March, somewhere in there. There was, however, one thing that was missed. It was a reference to the amendment and it had a fee of $300 in there rather than referencing the fee schedule. So there was a conflict between the two numbers and so we're eliminating that, putting it where it belongs in the fee schedule adopted by the Township Board.
Okay, so it's removing the notation of $300 and referring it to the zoning fee schedule. It looks like it also is allowing the zoning administrator to accept a payment of a fee.
Yes.
And I, I think that makes a lot of sense because when we updated the fee schedule, we found that it had not been updated and I think it was exceeding 10 years of no fee changes. So we know that, the other thing I would mention about this is having to go through a public hearing to update a fee is, is probably not the best use of our resources of the township. That fee schedule, you know, certainly doesn't have to be updated every year, but it should be regularly updated and reflect the cost of doing business and paying our appointees, et cetera.
This is the way though, you don't have to keep doing it.
That, correct, correct.
And this is a common way that zoning ordinances deal with fees. They just rather, for that very reason.
Well, yeah, we had all the other fees on the fee schedule. This one was just missing, so it's a clerical error. All right, any other comments?
Go ahead, Tim.
So, I guess I don't understand if we're making the correction, why is on page 34, I see the old one, 21.04 cost, and then A. Why is the new one, 21.04 cost, and the new thing is, goes right to B? Why isn't it just A?
I'm guessing that's a typographical error.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay, so if
With that change?
We make a motion that that change needs to be cleaned up.
Good catch.
Yeah, any other comments that anybody has? All right, so let me see.
I would make a motion to, make a motion to approve zoning amendment number 90, 2025-4 in accordance with the recommendation made by the Whitewater Township Planning Commission and the findings provided in correspondence dated September 30, 2025. The Township Board concurs with and accepts the findings and conclusions provided by the Planning Commission that were unanimously approved at their meeting on 9/3/2025.
Do we need to make a friendly amendment to correct it to be item A?
I don't think so because it's not, it's not mentioned in the motion.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, when you, when you do the rewrite, just.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion made by Aaron's and seconded by Hoaksoma. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? None opposed? Motion passes. The next discussion item we have is a review of General Ordinance Number 35, bicycles, roller blades, roller skates, scooters, and skateboards. So this is an action in response to some of the public's concerns about general ordinances being out of date. So this was initiated.
Well, it was referenced as being a mess.
Yes, it was.
To be clear.
This ordinance was adopted November of 2024. So it's been in existence for about 21 years. So I have an immediate concern of something I think we need to address and it's under penalties. It states in this.
2004.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, they're saying it.
I, I misspoke. 2004, so to today, it is 21 years. All right, so under penalties, it notes that anybody that violates or assists in the violation of any provision of the ordinance shall be guilty of a misdemeanor published punishable by a fine of not more than $500 or by imprisonment in the county jail for a period not exceeding 90 days. Such time at the discretion of the court. And then it also says, together with court costs, every day the violation shall continue shall constitute a separate and distinct violation under provisions of this ordinance. It appears to me that that is an excessive fine.
Go ahead, Tim.
I understand your concern. But when you look at the law, this, the enabling legislation for boards to adopt general ordinances sets a maximum penalty of $500 as a fine. It can be anything from a dollar to $500. That doesn't mean that's what you have to charge. And, and it does include basically a not to exceed 90 days in jail or both. That is gonna be typical of every general ordinance that you adopt. And I read through this a few times and my thought is, we already know it's not easy to pass general ordinances. But for whatever reason, and I'm not gonna sit here to second guess what happened in 2004 with that board, I'm guessing maybe that's when the tennis courts went in or shortly around that time and they were having skateboarding problems or, I don't, probably not roller blades at that time, I don't know. But there was clearly at one time an issue with it. From either people playing tennis or people playing basketball and sharing the courts and I don't know what. I know that other towns deal with this with sidewalks in their towns and have general ordinances and I understand the desire to soften it so it doesn't make it look like, oh, if you do this, we're gonna find this 12-year-old $500 for riding a skateboard on the tennis courts. But this is the general language of general ordinances and I, I, I mean, I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've ever heard of an issue over there with this and you know, maybe we could just do away with it altogether and that might be just fine, but there's a reason why it's here. And I don't want to dismiss a general ordinance that some other board felt was appropriate for this township. Just, I don't know. I, I just, I, I, I read through everything. I couldn't find really, it seems like very harsh language to me, but it doesn't mean that's how it has to be applied. It's just the, the legal ease of it.
So I, I took it as, there's two options. There's a civil infraction or there's a misdemeanor. We can, you can have it either way. And since there's no civil infraction ordinance, it has to be a misdemeanor and then it's the minimum of $500. So it has to be this, if there's no civil infraction. We could always add a clause in here that says if a civil infraction ordinance is ever adopted, it would be a fine.
Right, right.
Not more than $500, it's not a minimum of.
No, this was.
General ordinances.
To be a.
The misdemeanor is $500.
This was written to, to, this was written for communities that have a civil infraction ordinance and not to exceed 500, not to exceed 90 days in jail. If you don't have a civil infraction ordinance, then you're, then you go to the.
In the state of Michigan, it's $500 right now.
Okay. I'll take it. I haven't read that.
Yeah, it does seem very excessive, even though our zoning ordinance, I believe, says a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it does reference.
It's different than health and safety. I know, but yeah.
But I think it's good that we're reviewing all of these and that's the intent. So, but I just didn't find, for me.
Well, we could always put a stipulation, there should be a warning.
Has it even been an issue? Why, why?
Well, not, not in our time, but apparently it was at one time or it wouldn't be here, so.
Oh, maybe, maybe we should check the meeting minutes from 2004 to see if there was discussion. It may be worth a 30-minute exercise.
It may be worth a call to Carol Harkin to, you know, she signed this as the clerk. You have a relationship with her, right, Wendy, maybe?
Yeah.
But just say, where'd this come from? What, you know, what was going on at the time? And she might recall. I don't.
Ely shoes.
But, yeah, I mean, I just wouldn't wanna outright just get rid of it if there, if it truly is needed in this township because of whatever was going on, because if we get rid of it, then, I don't know.
I'm also wondering, I don't recall seeing signage over there to this.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Add signage. I'm a little surprised that there, if they would have this, that there isn't signage on the, at least the
That's because I don't.
That's available.
It's because I don't think it's happening, but.
I've never seen this.
But it's there.
Right.
And it is what it is, but.
Okay, any other further comments, Randy?
Well, it's, it's interesting, the zoning ordinance says a hundred dollars is the maximum fine and it's for imprisonment for 90 days, so the difference set, of course, that was written years ago, probably way before.
So how do you marry the zoning ordinance to the general ordinances then as far as?
Ultimately, you would connect that to a civil infraction ordinance.
But then you'd have to change the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's kind of the glue though.
Then I guess going to what Wendy was saying is, right now, we don't have a civil infraction ordinance. So my only suggestion would be under penalties. Would just say.
Can we have a warning?
Well, I mean, yeah, that would be in practice of what you would do, right? But I would just say that in this.
That's not what this is saying though.
No, I know. Section, section three penalty is where it goes A. I would just say at the beginning in parentheses, if there is a civil infraction ordinance in place, and then go on to say a person or firm, blah, 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 that states up to 500 or 90 days. And then you'd have to state then after that, that if one is not in place, then it becomes a misdemeanor with a minimum fine of 500. I mean, I, you would just have to describe it, I guess.
So I did talk to our attorney after our public hearing on the civil infraction ordinance and mentioned to him that I know that we do have language in some of our general ordinances that identify civil infraction. general ordinances that identify civil infraction in a plain written way. And I asked him about that, and he said, if the ordinance says civil infraction, then any concern with conformance must be addressed via civil infraction. And then I asked him about, well, what about that we don't have the general civil infraction ordinance? And he said, yes, that is what you should have. However, it does not preclude you from issuing a notice of violation. And so, and just indicated that it it exposes us to a certain amount of legal risk not having the companion document, the general civil infraction ordinance document. But it does not completely prevent, and he went further to say, you may not use the state default misdemeanor if your ordinance says civil infraction. So this one is a little different. First, it says misdemeanor, and then it said, says you criminal prosecution shall not prevent civil proceedings for skateboarding on the tennis courts. So it's just, it's just a lot of, this one provides almost an allowance of either. Some of the other ones only say civil infraction. So I know that that's a lot of words, but basically, he said, the existing ordinances that say civil infraction can be enforced through the civil system as written. However, it is just considered somewhat incomplete not to have the companion general civil infraction ordinance, which further describes the actual process. So that's, that's all I got.
Okay, so.
Not sure it helps on the discussion, and I think.
Yeah, now that I see that, I don't think that needs to change then. It's just, it is what it is.
So I think I heard people say it might be a good idea to check some records and or ask Carol Hocken for some background on this.
Yes, yeah.
Does somebody want to volunteer to take that on?
Do that.
Okay, Wendy, thank you.
Every other ordinance in the state of Michigan says that this is a civil infraction, so.
Oh, that's good information. Okay, and I hadn't thought about connecting it to, I know there are different ordinances on sidewalks. I hadn't thought of it that way. Any other comments on this? So Wendy, whenever you're done with that investigation, you can come back on that. All right, the last item under new business was board discussion of the post office announcement of their attempt to move to a different location with more space. So I think I know I got that in my personal mailbox, and we got a copy here at the township.
We all did.
Yep, sure.
So I've talked to the chief, and he's talked with the postmaster a few times about some different ideas. We've long discussed the need for a new fire station. Have property available for that in the future someday, whatever that might look like. And this was news to us. They've outgrown their space right next door to our current fire station. I look at it as maybe an opportunity. What kind of an opportunity? I have no idea whether it be a property swap kind of a situation, or I don't know. But I think it's worthy of reaching out to the postmaster general in Atlanta or wherever they're at, and seeing if we could set up a sit down with the post office. I think there's a desire from just a few things that I've heard, a letter sent to you for sure, but that people might be concerned about the post office maybe being located on M seventy-two and the dangers of not having a light to get in and out. And that, I mean, it's it's kind of nice being on a side road, right? And so there's some different issues, I think, that would be good for us to talk to the post office about. They they want to keep it within a three mile, and it probably is the desire. They move it into some existing building somewhere. I don't know where that would be or what would be available. But so that was the reason it's on the agenda, just so we.
For a three-mile jurisdiction or circle from where they are, right?
That's what they said.
Yeah, and I believe they were looking for a fairly large amount of square footage, quite, quite a lot more than what they currently have.
Right now, they're getting so many parcels, they don't have room to store them in.
Yeah. So I think the other good thing about reaching out to them is, and I'm sure they are professional and know this, but yeah, we, we know our zoning districts, and I think we're all very sensitive to something. You know, the post office gets a fair amount of in and out traffic. And we don't need more traffic snarls on Elk Lake Road or M seventy-two if we can avoid it. And I think Old Seventy-two is just really nice for this.
And I think we'd like to maintain a post office in our town.
Right, I think the other thing is, is that this could open up an easy opportunity to expand our, our firehouse and and give us some additional much-needed space. So, and I would think that that land would be available quite inexpensively, given, you know, it's, it's a small piece of the property.
I mean, everything would have to be appraised, but I just think the concept sounds.
Start the discussion.
Yeah, just start it, but.
So the post office leases that building, I guess.
That's my understanding.
So it's, it was interesting that this postcard came out, because previously I had received a phone call from this postal real estate company. So apparently, they own the building, and the post office leases from the post op postal real estate company. And I don't recall what town they were in, but I could definitely, if if we need to follow up with them, their bigger questions to me were how much further can they expand the existing building? But they were in trouble on this because, you know, they've got a septic system on the property. And so you can't, you know, put more building on top of that. And I helped them connect with the tribe regarding that they could get water, but, you know, no sewer or anything. So that wasn't really helping them achieve their goals.
It does seem to open up some possibilities here and try to find out. Would they be, I guess we don't really know until we have dialogue with them. Well.
Yeah, well, I I think the only thing we can do, they didn't provide a website or email or anything like that. I think we just have to send it through the snail mail, I believe.
Well, I, well, I think that the chief might be able to initiate that to the right people.
Oh, by talking to the postmaster.
Yeah.
In Williamsburg, sure. All right, so I I think the question is, is does everybody support just kind of reaching out and starting a discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to, I I think that, you know, it doesn't need a motion, but I think the chief and the supervisor should maybe sit down with the post office if it's possible to do that and just discuss ideas and what they're looking for, what we're, what our needs are, and see if there's anything that can happen, and bring it back to this board to fill us in.
Okay. And I don't, I don't recall the deadline on giving feedback, but obviously it's coming up.
They didn't really give one, they just said, open to public comment, I think, or.
Yeah, for a certain period of time.
The information was very vague.
Yeah. All right, so I'm I'm just looking around, is that consensus? Everybody agrees, it's a good idea? Okay. All right, so I'm going to move back around to the public hearing. So I'm going to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on the Skegumog Point SAD. And it is eight twenty.
Seven twenty.
Sorry, seven twenty-eight P M.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Slopsima, seconded by Kester. So I'm going to ask in the room again first, is there anybody that wants to make a public comment on the Skegumog Point?
Oh, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. All those in favor to reopen the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None opposed? Motion passes. So I'm going to ask in the hall again, is there anybody that would now like to step forward and make a public comment on the Skegumog Point SAD assessment roll? Okay, at this point, Joe will check on Zoom.
So on Zoom, you have four attendees. I'm going to start from the top and allow each one to unmute. The first participant is phone number ending in three, four, zero. And you are now able to unmute by clicking star six on your phone. Dial star six to unmute your phone and speak, phone number ending in three, four, zero. And I've just sent a request to unmute as well. Phone number ending in three, four, zero. And we'll give them a couple more seconds and move on to the next attendee. And three, four, zero has not unmuted on their end. So moving on to participant Connie Haymore, screen name Connie Haymore. Connie Haymore, you are now able to unmute on your device. If you want to talk, go ahead and unmute your device. And that's typically at the bottom of the screen. Here's Connie Haymore, she's now unmuted.
Sorry, I don't have a public comment. Thank you.
No public comment from Connie Haymore, she's muted. The next participant has typed their screen name as iPhone two. And iPhone two, if you wish to make public comment, you are now able to unmute. Screen name iPhone two. And I've sent a request for you to unmute if you wish to make a comment. Give them a couple more seconds. And one more request to unmute iPhone two. Seeing nothing from iPhone two, moving on to participant Mary Ann Varley. Screen name Mary Ann Varley. Mary Ann, you are now able to unmute. And Mary Ann Varley, I've sent you a request to unmute, and she is unmuted. Go ahead. Go ahead whenever you're ready. Mary Ann Varley, you are unmuted, and she's just muted herself again. All right, and moving on to the next user, username Zoom user. Zoom user, you are now able to unmute. Ooh, Mary Ann Varley has unmuted again. Mary Ann, would you like to make public comment? Mary Ann, you are unmuted.
I'm so sorry, it was so confusing.
We're hearing you now, Mary Ann, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, um, I'm downstate, so I'm sorry I can't be there. Public comment, I'm not sure what that means, is just where I can keep my opinion or questions? Because I have both, which would you prefer?
I'm sorry, that was really loud.
Can you, can you hear?
Yeah, Mary Ann, if you can make any comment you have associated with the Skegumog Point Road Improvement Project and the associated costs associated with each parcel owner. Do you have anything to share with the township board?
My biggest concern is the tree cutting aspect of it. And the last time we were at the meeting, they said there were not going to be any trees cut. And there was some discrepancy on the footage of each side of the road where originally, about a year ago, they said thirty feet on side. And then the last meeting in the summer, they said nothing. Nothing was being cut, per se. So we, I really want clarification on that, because for me, I don't want the trees cut or very minimal, do you know what I mean? So I I just want clarity on what exactly the tree cutting situation is.
Okay, the the Road Commission has addressed this and said that there will be some tree cutting in the road right away. And so that's the area abutting the shoulder of the road. They were going to try and minimize it, respecting the citizens' desire to keep as many trees as possible. But there are some that are absolutely on top of the shoulder of the road, and some of those will have to be removed. They have to make sure that they can get the water off the road. They also discussed doing some tree canopy pruning this winter in preparation for the project, because in addition to getting the water off the road, they need to get some sunlight on the road so it dries out during the freezing and thawing. That's the information we have at this time. They did say that they have to do the actual onsite surveying work, and that will be the stage at which they'll identify what needs to be removed.
In terms of feet and things like that, is that what you mean?
Okay. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Mary Ann, can you repeat?
In terms of like how much feet off the sides of the roads, that. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
By chance?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm just wondering. Okay, is, and when you say that, that's that's when they mean about the feet off the sides, that's when we'll know exactly how much feet, whether it's thirty feet or ten feet. They'll tell us then, is that correct?
Well, I believe they were going to try and stay within just fifteen feet, but they have to make sure that they get the water off the road. They understand that you don't, that the residents don't want all of the trees plowed down through a normal right-of-way. But, but you folks do need to understand that they will remove what they need to to make sure the road can function properly.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right, Mary Ann is currently muted. Do you want me to try Zoom user one more time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we'll try Zoom user one more time. Screen name Zoom user, you are able to unmute if you wish to make public comment. And we'll give you a couple seconds here. Doesn't look like Zoom user wants to comment.
All right, I think we maybe have a member of the audience that would like to make a public comment. Anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment relative to the Skegumog Point Assessment Roll?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the year.
You need to step up to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Larry Varley, nine, four, three, eight, Fairview. So if I understand it correctly, you're talking about, they're trying to, they're trying not to overextend the road for drainage, and they're only going to pick a couple of the trees that are in the way. But who decides how much canopy they take out? Because I've been on this road, or my family's been on this road for sixty-five, sixty-six years, and it's, and it's never really kind of been a problem, other than the the patching that they do. The passion that they do seems to be pretty inadequate, it always has been. So I don't understand why there has to be this gigantic overhaul of it, of the of the road itself versus particular pieces of it. But there's not very many spots up here that have that nice canopy. And that's the big thing that people are really concerned about, is that being destroyed. I mean, granted, they're, they're gonna, I was at the last meeting, they said they're going to do some trimming. That was a pretty vague description of what trimming meant.
I believe that refers to trimming the canopy versus cutting the whole tree down, meaning the fact, and I don't know why this is popping in and out. So the point of that, Larry, I believe, is that you have a tree, and there's the portion that they are concerned about. There's two things, the drainage and the shade. portion that they are concerned about, there's two things, the drainage and the shading of, of the road. In some cases, it's, the tree is not presenting a drainage problem, but it may, it may be creating a shading problem. And so the whole tree isn't creating a shading problem, but a portion of it. So the point that he was making is we don't have to cut down the whole tree in every instance. We can do pruning of the canopy that allows the sunlight to get on the road, which helps you not build up all that ice on top of the road in the winter, which is destructive to the road surface.
Yeah, I just, they're gonna, they're gonna remove all the canopy is what they're gonna do. They'll keep the tree, but they're gonna remove the canopy that's up there because that's.
I believe their commitment was not to just go in there with a bulldozer and do this huge wide swath. They agreed that they would try and be respectful about minimizing the amount of removal of your canopy, whether it's through a cutting and removal of a tree or whether it's trimming the canopy. The point of trimming is it can grow back. But it is, these are the rules of the Road Commission. They will, if we said to them, you cannot trim any of the canopy or remove a tree, the project would die immediately. They will not expend county funds because that does not meet the road construction standards.
Okay, now this, uh, I saw the paper, I left it back there. It's, it's like seventeen, what's being assessed seventeen, seventeen hundred plus? I'm trying to understand that assessment page. Seventeen eighty, so each household gets assessed seventeen eighty?
Every, each parcel on the road.
Each parcel on the.
Each parcel.
Parcel served by the road.
Right, in the assessment district.
Uh, yeah, I assume, I'm on a dirt road, but since I use that road, we're still going to be assessed that.
Yes.
Okay. Now, did you say there's going to be one more meeting on this? Because when they figure out what trees have to go down on the canopy or on the, on the road itself?
So the process is, this is the last public hearing on the project.
Okay.
The next successive things, I do know that the Road Commission has been out doing some surveying work and engineering work on the road. The next phase after that is to have the job bid out. And then look at bid awards. There will not be another public hearing on this unless the bids come in ten percent higher than expected. Then we have to have another public hearing.
So the assessment could change then?
The assessment could go up as much as nine point nine percent. And the assessment could also go down if the bids come in lower.
So this is just a guesstimate?
This is, is an estimate at this point, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the hall would like to make a public comment regarding the Skegumog Point Assessment?
Yeah, Gary Qualman, nine, four, six, eight, Fairview. So I guess I'd like to just echo a little bit with what Larry said in terms of the canopy. I mean, I think we all think of that as such a feature of that last mile of the road. And so I would like to echo, we really, I mean, I, I, it sounds like what we're thinking as a neighborhood is somewhat in direct conflict with what the Road Commission says, right? I mean, one of the reasons we have all these walkers down on the end of the road is because it's a shady walk. Among other reasons, it's just a beautiful area as well. So not sure how you reconcile those two, is trying to keep the canopy and some of the shade and meet the Road Commission. Yeah, so I'm not sure again how you do that, but we'd like to keep as much of that canopy as we could. Maybe there's other ways to get the, um, water off the road via the ditch and whatnot. So I, I'd just like to emphasize that again, that I think that's very important to the neighborhood to try to do that. I'd also have a question about, in terms of what the assessment is, who determined or how was it determined that of the total cost, you know, whatever that is, a little less than a third of the three hundred thousand is to be paid by the residents? And you know, there's an amount there for the Road Commission and also an amount for Whitewater Township. I mean, who, who made that determination as to the amount allocated, the amount to be paid by the, by the residents?
So that was something that was discussed between myself and trustee Aaron's along with the Road Commission as far as, you know, how we could address this longstanding problem on the road. By state law, a hundred percent of the cost could have been assigned to the property owners. But we, we felt that that was probably not appropriate. And so that's why the township is putting forward some of their mon, funds. The township can't, um, use all of our reserve funds on just one road. And so we came to this agreement with the Road Commission to address this. And I guess I would just like to remind anybody that's here from Skegumog Point Road, that, that the road condition has been a problem for a number of years. It has been, uh, proposed for repair for, for many times in the last ten years. And this was, um, basically kind of one more round of it. And realizing that, um, they had got quite a ways down on the project in the past. And, and it had then fallen apart for a variety of reasons, whether it was the concerns that the Road Commission had or that the residents had. So this was the proposal that was put forward to try and address the concern that many residents had with the condition of the road. And being realistic that this is one of the absolute worst roads in the entire county. And if we don't do something, you are going to have a gravel road, as some people have suggested that they're okay with. And that is an option, you know, it, it was an option, but that is not the way, um, many people said that they wanted their road repaired and to continue to have a paved road.
So when roads like Skegumog are repaired in the township, is there always a special assessment paid by the residents?
In this case, Skegumog Point is a dead end road, it is not a through road. So most of our roads in the township, or many of them are through roads, especially if they're paved. They, they go other places. So if you go down Deal Road or even the southern portion of Skegumog Point Road is a way to get to many other paved roads in the township. So the point with Skegumog Point Road is, is that it is a dead end road. Therefore, it is eligible as a special assessment district. Neighborhood roads are similar to that also. Like neighborhoods that, that, that dead end, that kind of thing.
I mean, there is some commercial traffic, you know, the.
Yes, you have the gravel pit from Elmer's.
Right, which is actually bad for the road in the sense that, you know, of what they're doing there with sand and gravel. Okay, so I guess the point is there's no going back to talk about the amount of the special assessment that's being allocated.
No, at, at this point, this is the proposal that has been shared with the residents and we're going through the public hearing process. So this is the last public hearing to allow things to proceed to quoting the job.
So is the only, is the only thing standing between where we are today and doing the project and whatever the vote by the council?
Yes, we have to vote today. But then the other thing standing in the way of the project is Road Commission ultimate approval has to be done. As well as obviously the job has to be bid and has to come in within the parameters. Otherwise, it has to be reviewed again. And this is all by state statute, it's very prescribed.
Sorry, one last time, and I know this has gone up a little bit before, but it, in terms of, of just trying to repair the road and incur a lesser cost, is, I mean, is there any reason to go back and take a look at that in terms of?
So basically, the first two miles is being repaired. The last mile is judged to be not repairable, other than pothole patch, that's all you get.
Right.
And it will continue to deteriorate. Like I said, it's one of the worst roads in the entire county.
Right. But I guess it is an option. I, I would say, just my personal view would be if we're going to significantly eliminate the canopy and do the berm, personally, I'd, I'd rather not do the major project, have the assessment, and I'd rather just patch, even if it's, even if it's bumpy. One might say that it's kind of like speed bumps, right? You know, you can only go so fast. And that's one of the things I think some of the neighborhood has concern about is if it's opened up, you know, then maybe people end up going faster there. And we do have, you know, other people providing services that come through there too, besides residences, you know, the electric company, plumbers, all those kind of folks are up and down the street all the time as well. So, I mean, there is a possibility of people having higher speeds if, if the road is, um, is cleaned up. So, I don't know. I, I, I just hope that you re, that you consider when you get into final estimates then, that it's a possibility to go back and just do repairs and not significantly destroy the canopy. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And, excuse me. Oh. Um, I just want to mention that there is a, still a speed study request in on the road. Okay, there is a speed study request in with the state police on the road. Okay, um, it looks like, Mike, would you like to make another public comment?
I was wondering if I could ask a question.
Um, yes, yes, please approach the podium and then I think, I think I will take your question and then we'll address it during board discussion. So, okay, go ahead.
Uh, am I understanding it correctly? If, if they, if the road were to go back to a gravel road, then the residents on the end of the road could have their canopy, could keep their canopy?
It's a county road.
Correct, but if it were to go back to a gravel road?
I understand your question, we'll address it, thank you. Larry, you would like to make another comment?
When we, um, when we were at the meeting in August, I understood that there would be a, another vote, public vote on, on the road itself. Meaning that, that when we voted no or voted yes at that time, that was not the last vote on that road. I understand now from what I heard here, it is the last vote. And then you guys are making the decision on that.
That is correct, and I can explain that a little bit more during board discussion. I'll explain the process to you further, okay?
Okay, but that, that, that's not how it was explained to us. We were told we, the, the neighborhood would have another say. That was, we were never told that was the last say.
That was not my understanding, but I've noted your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that hasn't provided a public comment that would like to make a public comment? Okay, at this point, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing again at seven fifty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Slopsoma, seconded by Aaron's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None opposed, that motion passes. Okay, now at this point, we have some board discussion. And then ultimately, uh, decision to read the resolution. So I want to answer a couple of questions. So Mike Jacobson asked a question about, is it possible that the canopy can be kept if we let the road go to gravel? I am not a hundred percent aware of all the rules on dirt roads, but ditching is still required. And, um, certainly not having sun on even a dirt road is a problem. I know that because I lived on a dirt road for ten years. So, um, I, I do believe the Road Commission has been kind of leaving this situation alone, kind of. I know they're much more sensitive to putting down asphalt and not having proper drainage and sunlight. The question about no additional vote, the statute is clear that the process is, after the informational meeting last July, everybody was provided with the opportunity to provide feedback based on their parcel or parcels. People that had multiple parcels were given multiple votes on that. And those were collected and tabulated. And of the one hundred and sixty-nine parcels, more than sixty-one percent had said that they are in favor of this project. I have had nobody come to me and retract their yes vote on the project. That's the comments I have for right now, what do you have to?
Yeah, it only says in the packet sixty-one percent, which is required to go forward.
Actually, fifty-one percent is required. And I guess I would like to clarify this, just to make sure everybody understands the numbers. That's fifty-one percent is required of all parcels. So people, the divisor remains a hundred and sixty-nine. If people don't return stuff, it, it's, it's not a yes or a no vote. So approximately seventy percent of the parcels responded, thirty percent did, did not. So even the fact that we're at sixty-one percent is significant because, because those other votes are missing because they, they were not yes or no. They're just no, they're none votes. But the divisor is the same.
But there's only eleven percent that said no.
Correct.
Like that, right?
Yes.
So the other thing is, um, kind of a couple of issues. I get the canopy thing, I used to have it until a month ago. We might be able to stop the Road Commission from trimming the canopy, but you can't stop the power company. They came through and did quite a whack job on my road, across from my house. But, um, we did express to them that the last time we believe that this went before the neighborhood, that was a major concern. They wanted thirty foot right away on each side of the road. They were going to ditch, heavily ditch on each side of the road. And Linda and I, when we talked to them, we just said, you know, that, that was part of why, other than the cost, why we think the project failed in the past. They are very aware of the sensitivity of the tree canopy on the road. Now, we as a board don't have control about, and the Road Commission isn't doing the trimming, I'm sure they're hiring a contractor. So what control the Road Commission will have, they're going to have to be very direct in their instructions to the company they use. We had to, we had very early on, when we got elected, there were, even before we were elected, we had a meeting with the Skegumog Point, many people, um, out there. And speeding on the road and the condition of the road was a major issue of many people on Skegumog Point Road. And we knew that that was going to be something that we were going to have to deal with as a board. The condition of not just that road, but other roads. And we knew that we had limited funds coming into office. We had four hundred and forty thousand dollars dedicated by the prior boards to roads. But we also know that the township has not undertaken road projects for a long time for one reason or another. They tried to do this one in the past, but it didn't happen. Uh, we decided that we were going to spend that money instead of just letting it sit in the general fund and split it between two major roads in this township. Uh, we pointed out to the Road Commission that there was extreme dissatisfaction among residents that jeopardizes the residents from voting, uh, the extra one mil for the increased millage for road repairs because Whitewater Township rarely sees anything out here from the Road Commission as far as, you know, we see the chip seal and it's very nice. Looks like a new road, but we haven't seen a lot of significant road repairs, other than Williamsburg Road and Elk Lake Road. And so we wanted, we, we basically were pleading with them, you know, put some of the township money back into Whitewater Township. And they recognized that, um, they gave a presentation to us at a public meeting, which I believe is taped to be viewed. And explained to us, which was news to me, um, that of that one percent that we all pay in our taxes, every year for our townships, about forty-five thousand dollars that they would dedicate to Whitewater Township to do something. And obviously, you can't do much with forty-five thousand. And obviously, you can't do much with forty-five thousand dollars. We're already doing brining and chip sealing, they pay for that. But um, you can bank that for over four years. So over four years, you know, you've got, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you could do something, maybe you could match it, you could do something halfway decent, right? Um, so I thought it was unfortunate that we were just letting that forty-some thousand dollars just go every year by doing nothing. Um, because once if you don't do it, then it just drops off. So they not only dedicated um, a third of the a third of the cost, more than that, right? So they dedicated um, quite a significant cost. Let's see, the road, the road commission's paying four hundred and fifty-five thousand of this. Um, we took our four hundred thousand and we split it um, between this road and Cook Road, so two hundred and seventeen thousand. So we don't have any more road fund reserves after this, if this if this does get approved. And then the special assessment district in this case pays three hundred. Um, that's how the numbers kind of worked out. But um, you know, I think that there, they even let us borrow into the fifth year of that forty-five thousand to kind of make the numbers work a little bit better for us. So I would just like to, you know, acknowledge the road commission. Now, we don't know what the bids are going to be yet, but I want to acknowledge that they really truly sat down with us, they worked with us, they came to your public meeting. Um, and I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but I heard that they um, tried to, you know, fully explain how the process works. But I just wanted to kind of, you know, let you know, this is um, this has been, you know, an in an intensive process from almost the time we've been elected. And I'm very happy to see it, at least to this point, and a majority of the people on the road. Everyone, I have speeding on my road. We tried speed bumps. We talked to the road commission about putting speed bumps in. They said they can't. It's a fifty mi- fifty-five mile an hour road, and it's too much of a liability, but they can't do them. It's just they're not allowed. Um, so I live on a private road, but that's another issue. But so, um, you know, I I get if you pave it and you make it smooth. I know you have a lot of contractors um, that are coming speeding down there. I have it on my road. You have, you know, the delivery people, I'll just say, all three of them um, do the same thing. They all want to get home. And that's an issue that every road deals with. And, you know, I I don't, I don't, we 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 as a township board are powerless to do anything about it, other than we we've petitioned for a speed study. They've cautioned us, even though it can't happen in this case, they cautioned us that if you do a speed study, in many cases, it ends up where they'll reset the speed to a higher speed limit. It's not going to happen when you're already fifty-five, but I'm just saying, you know, it's um, I don't know, I I don't really have too much more to say about the whole project, but I just thought I wanted to bring up some of those points because we have worked really hard to try to get this road done for everybody. And we know there's not a feeling of equity for everyone, especially people that own more than one parcel. Um, so, and we understand that, but we are following what we believe is is laid out in the law. The benefit to all is equal. Each parcel.
Other comments from other board members?
A couple of comments. I think you, when you were listing some of the work that the road commission has done that, uh, you mentioned Williamsburg Road, I think some of those were part of the federal aid system as well, so it's not necessarily some of the uh, the road commission's allocations of funds, so that was a little bit of a set aside. The other point I wanted to make was about the canopy and and I I believe what I I'm not a civil engineer, but I've worked with a lot of them over my career, and I know that they often think about things like that in terms of the useful life of the infrastructure that you're putting down. If you put infrastructure down without proper drainage, you shorten the useful life of the improvement. And so they're looking at um, trying to make sure if you're going to do this road, it's going to last as long as possible. So I think it it, I I get the aesthetics, I understand the prior problems that existed, but it seems like there's a window of opportunity here to to get an important project done in the township.
Okay, other comments? Jill, do you have any comments?
Yep. You should talk about the percentage rate and the um, financing and then not using the bond. Saving people money.
Yep, yep, we can touch on that. Hang on. So, um, there is uh, online in the packet, there there is just a general overview of the project here. Um, and we will go through this uh, when we read the resolution, but basically, the special assessment district totals three hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. That divides out amongst the one hundred and sixty-nine parcels into one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars per parcel. I noted that this is below the original rough estimate of not more than two thousand dollars per property owner from back, that estimate was made back in the June timeframe. Um, payments are allowed. Uh, you can either pay it upfront, and we will read all the terms of that. And and it would be prior to the issuance of the December twenty twenty-six tax bills. Or people can pay in payments over a ten-year period. Um, that's been calculated at an interest rate of five percent, which is within the state of Michigan statute guidelines. And um, Jill, do you have that payment amount per year?
Yeah, um, and there are comments of this on the back table, too, if anybody wanted to take one.
I'm sorry. Um, so if you chose to make payments over ten years at five percent, your total payment, instead of it being seventeen eighty, it would be twenty-two sixty-nine fifty-two. Um, so the total interest that you would be paying over ten years is four hundred and eighty-nine fifty-two. And I think just to note, didn't, um, aren't we allowed to go up to eight percent or weren't we allowed, but you guys chose to keep it down to five percent? If was that my understanding is that this could have been a lot more, but
Right.
It was, you know, we tried to keep it as low as possible.
In general, yes.
Yes. And Jill, can you tell us again the the annual payment amount?
Uh, well, the annual payment amount
Principle and interest.
So it's a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, but then it would be interest on top of that. So it's it's all scheduled out for you.
Okay, but how much, how much is like the first year payment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the first year would be um, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. At that high percent, and then by year ten, it would be a hundred and eighty-six ninety.
Okay, and those detailed lists are there?
Yeah.
So uh, the the last thing I wanted to mention is is that we did discuss with the road commission and the county um, whether we should actually bond this. And when you bond, it's similar to like a mortgage origination. You have to pay a lot of origination fees. And the township decided to internally fund this through the general fund, anybody that wants to make payments. Because if we had bonded it, the price to the people paying over ten years would have been substantially higher. And that it was really in the um, advisement of of the people that work on bonding regularly, they said, for such a small amount of money. This is just absolutely not a good idea because it would have greatly increased that price to the people that need to pay over time.
Because you're paying bond council and underwriting fees and all that.
Right, and and just for for the smaller amount of money.
And interest, too, yeah.
So, so that would have been much more expensive for people that need to pay overtime. And I think we all felt it was very important that we offer that opportunity um, to people to pay overtime versus paying in a lump sum. Are there other comments from any of the board members as far as discussion relative to this?
You you answered already their their comments that they asked, the questions.
I believe I answered all the questions. Um, you're not able to ask a question at this point, but there is another public comment at the end of the meeting. Before we adjourn. Okay. But at this point, I would recommend we proceed to reading the resolution. Would you like me to read it, Wendy, so you can make the requisite notes?
If you'd like.
Would you like to read it? I've I've got a copy here, too. So I've got the Whitewater Township's Skegumog Point Special Assessment District Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Reference Act one eighty-eight, Resolution Four of Four, for a special assessment district. Okay, and you fill out the header here, right? Okay, so, um, I I have a question here. The 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 resolution was offered by and supported by, do we need to do that right now or at the end?
We could, either way.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to make a motion that we read into the record this resolution. And I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
So, motion made by Slopeshamas, seconded by Milneck. So whereas pursuant to Act one eighty-eight, I'm sorry, this is the second time tonight.
Do you write, reads it?
I made a motion to read it.
Yeah. So this is just a
This isn't actually, this is just, she's following, she's
Trying to write.
She's offering a resolution. We're not voting on it yet. We're voting it at the end. Well, well, there needs to be support to offer it. She's just offering, it's being supported as an offer, but it's not to be voted on by the board until we read it all.
Until we read the whole thing.
So just take the motion part off.
Okay.
Just rescind the word motion.
Rescind the motion. That a motion is second.
So, rescind.
We'll fix it.
Read. Okay, so whereas pursuant to Act one eighty-eight, Public Acts of Michigan of nineteen fifty-four, as amended, Act one eighty-eight, the township board may proceed to initiate and carry out improvements to public roads, see MCL forty-one dot seven two two one C. And whereas the township board previously adopted a resolution to initiate and carry out improvements to public roads within Whitewater Township, including, but not limited to, improvement, maintenance, repairs, and paving related to improving Skegumog Point here and after referred to as the Skegumog Point Improvements, see MCL forty-one point seven two two one C. And whereas the township board, after a public hearing, previously adopted Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, approving the Skegumog Point Improvements, the proposed location thereof and estimate of the costs of the same in the total amount of three hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And the Special Assessment District, Skegumog Point Special Assessment District, against which those estimated estimated costs will be assessed. And whereas the township supervisor or assessing officer has prepared a proposed special assessment role describing all of the parcels to be assessed within Skegumog Point Special Assessment District as set forth, with the names of the owners thereof, if known, and the total amount to be assessed against each parcel. Which amount shall be such relative portion of the whole sum to be levied against all parcels in the assessment district as the benefit to such parcel bears to the total benefit of all parcels in the district. And whereas the supervisor or assessing officer affixed a certificate to the proposed special assessment role stating that said role was made pursuant to the township board's resolutions, and that in making the special assessment role, she has, according to her best judgment, conformed in all respects to the directions contained in the township board's resolutions and the statutes of the state of Michigan. And she reported the proposed special assessment role with her attached certificate to the township board. And whereas the township board previously adopted a resolution to set a time, date, and place for the township board to hold a public hearing, to hear any objections to the proposed special assessment role. And whereas the township clerk caused notice of the public hearing to be given by publication twice prior to such hearing in a newspaper circulated in the township, the first publication being at least ten days prior to the time of the hearing. And whereas the township clerk also caused notice of the public hearing to be given by first-class mail to all owners of land in the Special Assessment District at the address shown on the last township tax assessment role, at least ten days before the date of such public hearing. And whereas the attached Exhibit One, the proposed special assessment role was on file with the township clerk and publicly available prior to the public hearing. Whereas the township board conducted a public hearing at six thirty P M on October nine, twenty twenty-five, at the Whitewater Township Hall to hear any objections to the proposed special assessment role. And whereas, after hearing objections and comments regarding the proposed special assessment role, the township board finds that the special assessment role should be approved as shown in the attached Exhibit One. Now therefore, be it resolved by the township board of Whitewater Township, Grand Traverse County, Michigan, as follows. Number one, the township board determines that the special assessments reflected on the proposed special assessment role prepared by the supervisor are in proportion to the benefits to be derived by the properties specially assessed. The proposed special assessment role shall be designated as the Skegumog Point Special Assessment District Special Assessment Role. And the Special Assessment District against which it is assessed shall be designated as the Skegumog Point Special Assessment District. The Skegumog Point Special Assessment District Special Assessment Role in the final amount of three hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars plus any interest as prepared and reported to the township board by the supervisor and attached hereto as Exhibit One is confirmed. If the entire special assessment amount owed per parcel one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars is paid in full prior to the township sending out the December twenty twenty-six tax bills, properties that have prepaid special assessments shall not pay any interest. Should any full prepayment not occur before sending out the December twenty twenty-six tax bills, special assessment installments will be placed on tax bills beginning in winter twenty twenty-six and annually thereafter. Interest rate of five percent as accrued and in accordance with Michigan law, including Act one eighty-eight and the General Property Tax Act, will be applied to special assessment installment charges or subsequent late payments. The special assessment within Skegumog Point Special Assessment District Special Assessment Role shall be levied pursuant to the following. Parcel owners may pay the amount due in ten annual installments placed on the township tax roll beginning on the December twenty twenty-six township tax roll as permitted under Michigan law until each parcel owner has paid for their portion of the final amount as defined in Exhibit One. Parcel owners may also prepay their entire assessment amount as stated on the roll. The assessments, including annual installments, shall be billed and collected when they are due. As provided by nineteen fifty-four P A one eighty-eight, as amended, if any special assessment is not paid when due, then the special assessment shall be considered to be delinquent and there shall be collected, in addition to interest, a penalty in the same manner as real property taxes to the extent that such penalty does not exceed those a law allowed by Act one eighty-eight of nineteen fifty-four. Should a parcel owner pay his or her assessment amount using annual installments rather than prepaying the balance, such parcel owner's annual installments shall include applicable fees, including interest amounts not to exceed the values outlined in MCL forty-one dot seven three five A associated with funds advanced for the Skegumog Point Improvements paid for by the Township Improvement Revolving Fund. If any funds are advanced for the project by such a revolving fund. The assessments made in said special assessment role are hereby ordered and directed to be collected, and the township clerk shall deliver said assessment special assessment role to the township treasurer with their warrant attached endorsing the said role. Commanding the treasurer to collect the assessments therein, in accordance with the direction of the township board with respect thereto, and the treasurer is authorized and directed to collect the amounts assessed as they become due pursuant to the terms of this resolution and the provisions of the applicable statutes of the state of Michigan. The term of the Special Assessment District and assessments under it shall last until the amount specified has been collected from each parcel up to the total amount of the improvements to Skegumog Point Road, three hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars plus any interest accrued. All prior resolutions and parts of prior All prior resolutions and parts of prior resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, are hereby rescinded.
Clarification, so okay, after kind of reading through this as it goes, this format is a little bit different. The offer actually, what she said is corrected as a motion by her, seconded by Randy. And then reading the resolution is just board discussion, because we vote at the end, so that can still be counted as a motion and a second.
But we didn't vote on.
No, not until now.
Not, we vote at the end.
Yeah, reading the resolution was part of the board discussion.
Yes, okay. So any further questions?
Can um, you clarify Tim, what the penalty is, uh, if it does become delinquent?
It's only gonna, because we decided we act, the, the language, I s- I saw you underline something when we got to that part.
Yeah.
There, there wouldn't be a penalty from the township um, for like a special assessment bill. Because we're gonna invoice installments on the tax roll, so the penalty would be in accordance with late payment of taxes.
Okay.
So if they don't pay by February fourteen, there's a three percent penalty, one percent interest. And then March one, it goes to the county, and then they charge five percent.
Yeah, I think, okay.
So it's not a penalty for our township.
But it's the same, same as the tax.
It's treated just like a tax.
It is handled exactly the same way.
Right. That part could have actually kind of.
And administered, I guess to clarify, handled the exact same way as past due taxes um, in terms of interest and penalty, and it is administered by the county if it goes past due. Okay, any other questions or clarifications from the board members? All right, roll call when ready.
Erin.
Yes.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Just, okay, it's. So one, just, while we're not, we're coming, I'll let you go on.
All right, so at this point, I'm just checking things. I do not have any tabled items. Now we have general board comments and discussion.
Oh. So I have one.
Oh, I have.
I was just related to that, so I mean, I heard some concerns about this, that, and maybe another meeting. And is it, does anybody know, is it typical, like when you're gonna undertake a major road project, to request of the road commission to meet with maybe the neighborhood at Samuel's Farm again? And, you know, kind of before construction starts, if we, if everything's a go and the costs come in the right way, it, would it be possible to request a meeting just to talk about the process? What lanes are gonna be closed? How are we gonna get to our house? What's going on? It just seems to me like.
I'm not sure if that's typical, but I would support and be very willing to try and um, get them to come uh, talk to us about it. And um, certainly scheduling is a big deal. Um, you know, the construction season is pretty short. And I, I believe that is why Dan Watkins did tell me some of that tree. If everything is looking still very positive, positive come January, February, he indicated sometimes he does have, some of his crews have time to go in and do a bit of trimming here and there um, to get a little bit ahead on the project. And he just mentioned that's something that typically they do do, and they can do that at no cost to the project. It's not additive.
Yeah, it'd be kind of nice to see the trees that they plan to remove being ribboned, and then having a meeting. Um, and just have people talk about the canopy there again before tree trimmers come out and do their thing.
I don't see that as too much to ask.
I don't think so. I mean, people gotta know how to, they're gonna get to their, there's gotta be some communication about how this is gonna work.
On graphic control, I certainly.
They're redoing the whole road down there.
The engineer that talked that day, he seemed pretty open to that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
All right, any other board discussion that anybody has?
Did they describe a bid date for this yet? Do they, or anticipated for?
No, but I just know it was vitally important that we get this done prior to the end of October.
Right.
Otherwise, it would get kicked to twenty twenty seven.
Because they have to do the plans and specs to be able to put it out to bid.
But I, I can follow up and just ask him what that timeline is, and we can report that out at our next meeting.
Yeah, final engineering, and I think they're gonna bid this one out with Cook Road to try to get economies to scale, so.
Right, and I do know he mentioned to me several times that the whole road commission has to sit down and vote on all of the proposed road projects. So, that's why we previously sent in our um, resolution and our commitment to pay our portion, the township portion. And, and that's why I will get with Dan and let him know that we passed this resolution tonight.
So the other thing I forgot to mention is, on this road, um, the next year in twenty twenty seven, at no cost to the township or to the residents, they're gonna come back and do a chip seal for preservation of the road.
That would be twenty twenty seven, yes.
Correct, yes.
That chip seal is going on top of the new pavement they're putting down?
Yes.
They do it the next year now to.
Just like they did here at the intersection?
Yeah, they, they just said that they get a lot more longevity if they do that second round. And that is something that's just covered in our normal um, fees that we pay to the county. It's not a special project. Other comments from the board or other discussion items?
I do, I'm sorry, Joe, I don't know why my mic doesn't work, but. Linda, could I ask Mr. Qualman, the spelling on his name is, I can't make it out on the.
No, I cannot, thank you.
I think your mic is working, I can hear.
I, okay, now it is. Now, now it is, thanks.
U U A L M A N N, one L, two Ns.
I'd have had it wrong, okay.
All right, any other board discussion? All right, if not, our next township boarding meeting is Thursday, October twenty three at nine A M here in the township hall. I do not have any other board announcements at this time. Uh, so now it is time for public comment. The same rules apply. Um, and this is just for people in the hall. So if anybody in the hall would like to step forward to the podium and make a public comment, please state your name and address.
I forgot to make your card, damn it. Heidi Vomit, eighty three eighty eight, Winnie Lane, Williamsburg, Michigan, private ci- private citizen. According to the Whitewater Township meeting minutes from December first, two thousand four, a new ordinance was adopted to regulate skateboards and other recreational devices. The ordinance was general number thirty five, and it, I can't say specific, oh, I did. Specifically prohibited the use of skateboards, roller blades, and bicycles on the surface of or within the township's tennis and basketball courts. While the minutes do not specify individual complaints, the adoption of this ordinance in, indicates that there were enough concerns regarding the use of skateboards and other devices on public property to prompt official action. The ordinance also includes penalty for violent violations suggesting previous issues with damage or misconduct. This regulation was separate from laws regarding skateboards on streets, sidewalks, and private property. The meeting minutes corresponding ordinance are the primary public records indicating the na- the nature of the complaints and the township's official response during that period. I couldn't find any complaints anywhere. I can't find any minutes past two thousand and, I think, nine, but I remember when I first moved here and I went to the tennis courts one time. And there were issues then, but it was with bicycles. And I just remember somebody coming over from the fire department telling them to go away. So, I guess there were issues, there wasn't, but Google's your friend. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else in the hall like to make a public comment tonight?
Mike Jacobson, Skigamog Point Road. Uh, I'd like to address uh, what Mr. Slopsoma said. Um, if I understood him right, he said short-term rentals have never been legal in this township. Uh, that's not true. Uh, we all know that there was a time when there was no zoning ordinance in this township, so. Obviously, they were legal before that time. And up until the time when, when whatever was printed that says they're illegal, they were legal. Um, the Conklins, right on Elk Lake, right down at, then the Cook Road, were doing it for, for years and years and years. And the Pontoskis were doing it on Skigamog Point Road on Round Lake for years and years and years, well into the two thousands, Pontoskis. I'm not sure when the Conklins quit, but the Pontoskis were well into the two thousands before they were done. So they were legal and they were operating in this township for a very long time. So I, I believe his, if I understood his statement, his statement was incorrect. And then also, he made a statement that um, about junk in people's yards. Just because it's junk to one person, doesn't mean it's junk to the person who owns it. I know a lot of people think what I have in my yard is junk, but it's not. It's, it's my, my dreams, my hopes, my projects, and my retirement. All of those things are the stuff in my driveway. Had something else to say, but it's lost to me now, so. Appreciate your time and your effort, and I want, oh, I wanna thank you for keeping this meeting to a normal time period. This is awesome. Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to make a public comment?
Uh, Gary Qualman, same spelling, nine four six eight, Skigamog. Let me, let me just say, I did city council down in Columbus, Ohio, so really appreciate what you do for us here. You know, you, you dedicate your time and all that, so thank you very much. Please don't take any of the comments as, you know, in any way kind of harassing what, what you've done on this project and whatnot. It's all great. So thank you very much, but just back one more time, and we're, we're just beating this dead horse, so to speak, but just one other thought I had was, you know, depending on what they come back with and how you evaluate that, and I think that meeting would be great, by the way that you mentioned to follow up. If there's any way we could get a little better idea of what the visual would be like, I think that would be very important to the people in the last mile. And then that just makes me think a little bit, you know, could this even be, you know, two projects, you know, the first two miles? And then depending on what the contractor comes back with, something different perhaps for the last mile. If the road commission can't agree to something that those residents, you know, I don't know, how many residents do we have in the last mile? You know, is it eighty residents or sixty residents in the last mile, you know? I, I think they might all, not all, I think a majority would not want the project done if it was gonna dramatically change the feel of that last mile. So maybe just keep that in mind, you know, as you get through the project into that last phase. Thank you very much.
Kim Mangus, um, I wanna congratulate you on this project. Um, I was very concerned when you were taking up a road project because I've watched previous road projects in this township. And um, from what I can see, the proposal that you're giving the residents is very reasonable. It's very doable. It's something that most folks can do. And that is not um, something previous boards were able to do. They, they came up with proposals that were literally enough to create a second mortgage or even bankrupt some residents based on a road, and that shouldn't happen. Um, I also uh, want to applaud your being receptive to residents' concerns about the tree canopy and tree pruning. Um, but I also wanna remind you and everyone else, um, the road commission could come in and gut your trees at any time. They don't need anybody's permission. They don't need a project. They don't, they, they will look at it because there is a project going on. But I'm off a dirt road, uh, off of a county maintained dirt road, and they just came through and clear cut our canopy out. And i- it's something that they can do within the right of way regardless. So um, I encourage you, keep it as reasonable as possible. But also keep in mind, there's only so much you can do, and there's a whole lot that they can do if they decide to um, trim things up in their mind. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment tonight? All right, with that said, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Slopsoma, seconded by Custer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.